Councilor Wood?
Here.
Councilor Ray? Mayor for the San Antonio?
Here.
Councilor Iger?
Here.
Councilor Yawson?
Here.
Councilor Taylor? Councilor Lewis? Here. Councilor Zabrowski? Okay, we do have a forum, so we'll just see what the meeting... Under petitions, I have a few requests here. First, from Kenner Now, who would like to discuss Hope Hill? Good evening.
I want to go over a couple of, uh, a few items from the disaster recovery team meeting that was held on October the 8th at the Act Center. And I went through about a two hour tape, and I went through there and did some of the high points, so, uh, do you want to read along with me? I'm gonna start with number one, and I'll read off what I am gonna do. On number one, it says, "We're asking questions of Executive Director. When you assume your responsibility as the executive director, do they present to you a business plan? Miss Poppy on board in August of 2018." No, they did not. Do they have a business plan? We're in the process of creating our policies and procedures. We're in the process of restructuring everything in general. Number two. So if they made a decision for the purchase of the property, that was without a business plan, yes or no? The plan was to provide affordable housing for the victims for the survivors of Hurricane Harvey. Now, there was a proposal. There was a proposal that was presented as far as the vision, the vision itself, so if you want to call that the business plan, you can, but it was created with the vision that this is what we are going to do. Question, it did not have the nuts and bolts, that is what I'm trying to get to. It did not have the nuts and bolts of a formal business plan at the time the property was purchased, and still did not have that at the time you took over the executive director. Is that all I want to say, yes or no? No. Uh, number five. Does the $3 million have to be spent on the Hope Hill project? And this was answered by Vice President Larry Jackson. I'm gonna say not necessarily. Let me go on and say there's nothing, let me say there's no written agreement with Samaritan's Purse that says you have to do this or we'll sue you. The question is, when they give you the money, you can do whatever you want. That's pretty much the case. Number 11. Who owns the property at 861 South Reynolds? And that's the, uh, headquarters of the disaster team. Joy and Steve Cameron own the property at 861 South Reynolds. Did they get any rent for that? They get no rent, they pay the utility, we pay the utilities, they get no rent, they get no anything. In the 2018 budget, it shows $12,500 of rent on the building. That's utilities. Rent on the building, that's utilities? That's for utilities. And there's a $25,000 end time contribution to Joy and her husband. What's that about? That's what they had given to us in use of their building. That's what they could have rented that building for, so the gate's set. And that's normally deducted off your federal income taxes, correct? I guess, if you want to. Number 16. This is from, uh, Vice President Larry Jackson. Comment. I don't think any of us are concerned about what it will do, Hope Hill. How do we get there from here? I don't know. I haven't got a predetermined concept of how it's going to happen. Is it going to take some help from you? I think so. Yeah, outside, but inside too. Have been suggestions? Not every suggestion I hear from everybody is helpful. Would you be willing to take my suggestions to the Board of Receivership? And there was a comment earlier about turning this whole thing over to somebody else, dissolving the Bible, I believe, what it was. Would I be willing to ask the Board to consider talking about this? Sure. To consider going into receivership? If I can put it in government terms, I'll bring the, I don't know if that's an answer, but I'm as serious as I can be in saying I'd be interested in what you think ought to be done. And I understand that some think you ought to just sell the property and let someone else have it, and you take that money and buy lots all around you. That actually was a question I had too. I don't think that's a dumb idea. And it's something receivership might intervene. That might be the vehicle. There's been a lot of talk about different concepts about land trust and all this sort of stuff. That's a discombobulation. It is indeed, and it may not even be what we ought to be doing. And, uh, we're gonna go to item. Item number 12. This is a comment from Executive Director Marcia Pyle, and I'll, I wanna play this for you.
Tell you this. I have seen, so he tries to come in, and they come to us with a piece of papers, MDS listing all of, uh, the, the website, saying, "Oh, look, I found you a house. I found you a house that's affordable, $75,000. It's one small city lot, and a house that should be bulldozed. Not something that they can simply move into and cook supper, and here we go with our, with our life." These homes that are being sold, I'm sorry, these pipelines are being raped by citizens of LaGrange. Because, because, they, everybody, exactly, exactly, that's what it is. You tell me, you tell me, would you drop your property, or would you raise it? If you had an available piece of property, would you drop it, or would you raise it? This is opportunistic for you to give us some more money.
So is this how they feel about our community after everything we did?
Be a question for us, huh?
I'm disgusted by that comment. That's all I have to say.
Ma'am, I'm gonna mess up this name.
That's day four.
Day four?
Yeah.
She would like to speak on responsibility of the property.
Yes. I'm sure you can hear me anyway. Is the city responsible for clearing the land at the new, where the new second chance is supposed to go up?
Well, our responsibility is to, EDC agreed to take down the old port farm building.
Have, who, I'm sorry, the EDC?
The EDC, the United Open Corporation sold the land to...
Here.
The EDC sold the land to Second Chance to build a new facility.
Okay.
And part of that, they retained, in the sale, they agreed, the EDC agreed to tear down the old port farm building. It's the, uh, kind of mustard color building that is there right now. And they're in the process of having it.
Are you talking about the new one, or the old?
The new one.
I'm talking about the new one.
The new one on Rennelster.
Right.
That's all they're responsible for, is to take down that building.
And the city has no responsibility for clearing?
No.
The land. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll, okay, is there some, is there something you believe we were? I'm just trying to figure out.
No, I, I've been gone for about four months.
Okay.
And I'm just trying to catch up also.
Okay. No, and the only other one, there is a contract, my understanding, just so everybody else knows, on Second Chance, the property down by the river that was flooded.
Oh, yeah.
Actually, there's a contract on that building, and that process will be made up soon.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, next is Mike Mayberry to discuss Hope Hill. Good evening, Mike.
How you doing?
Fine.
Well, I sure appreciate y'all using the microphones. We can hear that. Can you hear this?
Yes.
Good. Oh, thank you for letting us do this. How you doing?
Good.
Has LaGrange Area Disaster Recovery Team, commonly referred to as Hope Hill, filed a preliminary plan for a replant?
Yes, sir. They submitted their plan for replant last Wednesday, and it's currently under review by state.
And, and, uh, now, in, in the city arguments, uh, 30 days for the city council to act.
Correct. There's a 30-day process. The plan right now is operating back in November.
And is that, uh, business?
I believe it's 30 business days. Uh, it doesn't stipulate either in state law or in the ordinance, but I think it's referred to 30 business days.
So, but, but the city of LaGrange is 30 business days?
We're dealing with as 30 business days.
30 business days. Well, that's, that's mighty enough. In addition to that, uh, has LaGrange Area Disaster Recovery Team doing business as Hope Hill? Petition to city council for a request for annexation?
No, sir, not at this time.
Ninety-five. Thank you, sir.
Scott Gavin, is that it? Welcome, Scott. He has questions and answers from the FCDRT. An exemption?
Yeah, we need a Hope Hill meeting that we have over there.
Oh, okay.
There's a CD in the package you guys were given. You gotta fall down on it. All right, if we go to, uh, item 19, I'll be back toward the back, and I'll start with the question. Tell me where our community land trust exists on a piecemeal basis in the United States? I'd like to know where it's at. If it's not, we're going to create it. You know what? We're LaGrange. We're creating our own unique subdivision based on our needs. So if it doesn't exist, if it doesn't, question. This is an exemption per state law, and I don't know how the appraisal issue is going to work with this. You've got to tell us how it's going to work now. Right. That's what I'm saying. That's what I'm saying. I can't tell you right at this moment how many lots are going to be community land trusts, but I can tell you it's going to be based on individual needs. So we want to keep the individual needs of our clients our number one priority. Now, everyone probably thinks that everyone that lived down there in that trailer park was low income. Well, I can tell you that you're completely misinformed. There were people living in that subdivision that make six figures, but the reason they lived there is because it was the only affordable place to stay. So we need to get this misconception that all these people are low income, that all these people, whatever they may be, that they're just citizens of LaGrange. So based on, if they want, we may have clients that come in and give them a piece of land, and they want to build. MDS only gives them two options, a two-bedroom or a three-bedroom. This family may want to build a four-bedroom because they're a huge family. So you know what? They decide to go and get a mortgage and hire their own builder to build on the lot. Item number 20. Question. Can anybody buy one of these lots? Answer. After all of our flood survivors are taken care of, then anyone? Item 21. Question. What do you guys do after you've done all this, and your annexation is, you're rejected by, let me start over. What do you guys do after you've done all this, and your annexation is rejected by the city, unless you have a guarantee that they're going to do it? We'll cross that bridge when we get there. Yeah, I mean, I mean, we'll have to. We'll have to figure out when we get there, you know, honestly. Thank you.
Thank you. Ma'am would like to, a reaction to the record article Friday's paper, FCDRT. Questions and answers, ask.
Okay, mine's a two-part, uh, two-part, uh, statement. The first is dealing with the reaction to this past Friday's front page article on the loss of the $8.7 million GLO grant to Schulenburg. In an interview with Janet Murray, the mayor accused the opposition to Hope Hill as a cause for private developer to rethink LaGrange. The Citizens Alliance, as a part of the opposition, vehemently rejects any such accusation and throws it back to the mayor and the city council. In fact, the Citizens Alliance was in sync with the GLO grant money for the proposed multifamily development and published a letter to the editor to that effect in the October 5th issue of the Fayette County Record. The Citizens Alliance went a step further and called the Texas Land Commission's office in Austin over two weeks ago about this matter and spoke directly with Brenda Ack as to the reasons for the change of direction and to learn if any officials steered this project away from LaGrange due to their support of Hope Hill. Ack said she was not aware of any such communications. From my standpoint, the motive lies with these officials and proponents of Hope Hill and not with the opposition, but use this thing as a flawed project. Now, this goes on with the FCDRT public meeting that was held at the PAC exemption building. It was held on, uh, October the 8th. It was in the form of questions and answers. Questions were given by the audience to the, uh, the narrator, who was the executive director, Director Marcia Pyle of the Fayette County Disaster Recovery Team. Comment was given by Marcia Pyle. We have people that have moved because of...
Could you tell us what number you refer?
I'm sorry, this is number six.
Thank you.
We have people that have moved because of the lack of affordable housing here in LaGrange and Fayette County. They have moved to Bastrop County, Lee County, Colorado County, and they have already been placed on the Hope Hill clientele list because they are planning on selling their property there and moving back to LaGrange, 'cause they don't want to leave LaGrange. But we left them no option, because instead of people opening up their homes, their spare cabin, their whatever it might be, their rental property, they hiked up their rental property, they closed their doors, they had nowhere else to go. Uh, number eight. The question from the audience. It is going to be a land trust? Answer from Marcia Pyle. It will be lot by lot. If a person comes in, it will be pace by pace. If a person comes in and they are unable to maintain the property's actions. Let me tell you, first of all, what the land trust is, because everybody has this misconception of what the land trust is. So the land trust, it will remain in FCDRT's name on a 99 or so year lease, 100-year lease. And with that, land trust, we're able to cap the valuation of the property, which, period.
Was there a further comment after the which?
That's where she left it off. That's where she left it off.
That's where she left it off.
Uh, item nine. Comment from FCDRT. This comes from Marcia Pyle. I believe it's Marcia Pyle. Sometimes Larry will speak. Let's talk about a single mom who's working two jobs, and we're trying to help her out and put her in a house, and she can only afford much less for taxes. So if we cap that, five years, 10 years, and now she's paying for her kid's college, these taxes, she's still taxed on the same valuation, to where she can then afford to send her kids to college and keep her home, and she doesn't have to choose between one or the other. Number 10. Question from the audience. Why was the city government, county government, community, or anyone in this room, and why were we not invited into this decision early on, when it was first taking place? Because this is a huge development, huge in a city the size of LaGrange and county, the size of, and the population of Fayette County. So we feel, feel cheated, and we've lost trust, and we feel that we haven't nearly had all of our questions answered. Because if you all had come to the community in the beginning, we wouldn't, we probably wouldn't be here right now. Answer from Marcia Pyle. Well, the thing is, and I wasn't here then, but they were too busy to comment and sit in...
Ma'am?
I'm sorry.
Your pardon, it's up.
Okay.
And we do have the script in front of us. Thank you.
All right.
To make clear my position, I'm entitled to a personal opinion of what goes on, but as mayor, I have to keep an open mind and listen to all sides of every issue and make my decision on that. You can confer with anybody on this council. I have not tried to sway anybody in any way. I was asked why I thought Schulenburg had three offers for three people trying to build a port school, and LaGrange only had the one. And I responded, "I don't know. I do not keep up with what goes on in Schulenburg that closely." And then I was asked, "Do you think that would have an effect on someone's choice of where to build a port school housing?" And I said, "If it were me developing some land, I certainly would take everything into That's what, that's what the conversation was, to which you're referring. I took a side and was against the alliance. That's not my position as mayor to take a side, and I have been generous in letting you have time to comment week after week with the same material, not anything really new, still accusing us of, of plotting and not coming to you. I would like to know who got informed when, uh, Gar, uh, what is the one there?
Sunset.
Sunset Ridge Development was in. They, they didn't come to the city, they didn't come to the community. When Lindwood was built, they didn't come to the city other than the same as Hope Hill. You know, they come for information on what the codes are and everything else. There was no reason to expect that they would have to come to the community. They've been making an effort to come to the community. But that, when a developer comes, he doesn't have to do, he doesn't have to ask for a vote of the community of what they're gonna do, and we, as a council, have to wait till we're presented stuff. And we, you know, it's week after week, asking the same questions, getting the same answers. Legally, we do not have to allow any petitions. Legally, during the action of the council, I, I have to give permission for you to, for anybody to speak on an agenda item. I think this council and myself have been very open to hearing everybody's comments week after week, but you get dirtier and down in the dirt over and over again with your accusations. And honestly, I can't speak for the council, but I personally am getting tired. And if it doesn't stop, I'm talking about the personal attacks on people. If it doesn't stop, we won't have this.
This was a personal...
Thank you, dear. Your time is up.
This was a personal attack.
Your time is up.
It's a personal attack on us.
Sit down, or we'll have you removed. Come. Good evening, Paul.
Do I get my little binder?
You sure do. Actually, everybody can read a little more.
Uh, in the city budget, uh, there's something that says that they're under revenue source, a rent house. Do you remember having a rent house?
Angela's house.
We actually rent the house that, uh, this affects law, this is the, we rented her. We bought that corner of line. When we did the fire station, they bought that whole tract of property.
And we didn't tear down the house.
Which it says it's $3,000. Just doing the math, that's $250 a month?
Correct.
Shouldn't we at least get fair market value out of that deal?
Well, she's a...
Also, the city attorney, you can subsidize it. Everybody, you're paying her, and raise the rent, or do it the other way around. That's the policy. That's what we're doing. Part of our compensation for the position of city attorney.
Do we pay the utilities also?
No.
Do we pay the insurance on the building?
If city property will maintain, just like any other city property, we have to cover insurance on it.
So that's yes.
Contingent there.
Do we mow the grass too?
Well, we mow that same lot next door.
It's, it's city property. If her office was in, in the, the chambers, it's, it's basically the same.
Why do we call it rent house, though?
Because it's the house that we rent and receive...
It's an, it's an office.
So it's, it's a house we've been comfortable, not in name, whatever you want. There's a better name. I'm open to what you want. It's a white house.
City attorney's office.
My, my check from Angela's, my monthly check.
Isn't she the attorney for Flotonia and Carmine Mall?
She also says other city fiscal.
Do they pay a portion of her rent? Is that the only office that she has?
I think that is our reason with her for that house. If you, you can question it or disagree, that's just the way we have done it. I'll be glad to evaluate it, uh, it's working on us.
Would you like to pay for the lawyer for your market value?
You're...
I'm, I'm sorry. It should be, I believe. Let me... It starts off with calling it the wrong thing, you know, which brings up questions of why we have a rent house.
Some cities have houses.
We, we got people that need a house, and you look at the, the budget, and it says rent house.
Office rent, office like that. But it is, but it is a house. It's not a form of...
It doesn't matter what it looks like, a, a house.
It doesn't matter.
I can change the name. Thank you.
Oh, I got one more question off of a question somebody else had asked earlier. If I, is the EDC the same as the city?
Is it just mortality of the city? It's a separate department. Their budget's certainly, the city council approved their budget.
Who?
The city council appoints the EDC.
It's actually in charge of the EDC, it's it.
Again, is the director running and runs the EDC program?
Do we have a timeframe of when we're doing the work for second chance?
We are working right now on trying to remove it. We have to asbestos removal. The initial contracts came back very high, so a little bit, it's now not, it brings to this agreement. So I have to, have to go out and try to find someone else to, uh, remove, uh, that building. So it is a, it is a big, drawn-out process, but it should not impact the overall redesign of that property.
Do we have a timeframe of when we're...
As I said, we are still working, trying to get bids in. Uh, it will probably be within the next 30 to 60 days. Asbestos removal requires a 10-day notice, so it will have to be, once we receive bids, we authorize that bid, we then notify the best department of health regarding a 10-day notice before you can remove the asbestos removal. Once the asbestos is removed, that process will take five to seven days. After that, the building will be removed, and it's a tie. During that process, the county has asked the district local commission to look at doing a, do a next survey of the building, a video survey, to kind of maintain the history of that building.
We did test stuff in there to know that it's asbestos in?
Yes, sir. The asbestos survey has been done, the testing's been done, we have a work program, what's gonna take for this?
When did we do the survey?
We did the survey probably within the last six months prior to the sale of the property.
How did they get in there to do that?
What do you mean? You can get in that building. Yes, sir. I went in there, I went in there when there was nasty trash everywhere. Yes, sir. You were in the building?
I don't, I was in windows.
So you were on the roof?
Yes, I was. Correct that. I very well could have been there, but I did read this out.
But I, before you come, I just wanted to say, please don't go in the building, because it is, uh, it's quite an experience in there.
I did still see the, uh, outside toilets that are still there.
No, it was on the outside of the building, because when it was like, no, Austin put in one to, to Angela inside. Thanks, sir.
Was that all five minutes?
We, we could tell what you were trying to do.
We got you.
We got it. Okay. Item number one is, uh, the presentation of Allison and the State of Norris to inform the council of their upcoming teen career development project that they are working on and a main degree project.
It also makes me have dates, because we, we're going in all season, from Schmackin Fest to, uh, Chiky Chiky and all that.
Good evening. Um, we are here to talk about our program, Career Cruising for Teens. About, um, a year ago, the Fayette Public Library applied for, um, to participate in a project called Future Ready with the Library. Uh, the project is funded by the Institute of Museum and Library Services and is coordinated by the Young Adult Library Services Association and the Association for Small and Rural Libraries. We were selected, um, as one of 24 libraries in the United States to participate in the second cohort of this project. And, um, I have also been asked to serve as a mentor to the last and third cohort that will begin this coming November, so very soon I will go and facilitate that orientation. Uh, the project aims to build the capacity for small rural and tribal libraries to provide middle school students with college and career readiness services. to provide middle school students with college and career readiness services. You're already there. Um, community engagement is a large part of the project. And so when I came back from orientation, my goal was to meet with, uh, members of the community. I met the school administrators, teachers, teens themselves, parents, nonprofits, business owners, to kind of talk about what their vision was for the community's youth as well as what their concerns were. I specifically spoke with businesses about what their concerns were as far as the job applicants they were receiving, how interviews were going, how, um, new employees were handling, um, starting in the workforce. Um, and out of my meetings, a partnership emerged between, uh, myself and the library and the City of LaGrange's Office of Community Development. And so we developed a goal to work with teens to build a stronger workforce for this community. And our, um, the way we're gonna do this is we wanted to expose teens to careers that they exist currently locally and then develop their future employability by working with them on things like job applications, um, interview skills and other social skills. So once Stacy and I decided that we would, uh, wanted to work together on this project, we then went and we met with businesses, nonprofits, and other people in the community that also felt very passionately about, uh, the youth and about, uh, their future employability and their workforce in this community. And so we came up with a pilot program for six through twelve players. And, um, in 2019, we will have four interactive career exploration workshops. Um, we are engaging eight local businesses and organizations in these workshops and we are highlighting local industries, um, and offering career exploration opportunities from banking to the arts.
Okay, so I believe you have one of our rap cards in front of you and kind of teach you on the career path that we're looking at. So like Allison said, we're doing everything from banking to, uh, the behind the scenes view of internet and phone services to theater arts and then the medical field. All of the dates that we have last from nine AM to three PM, they're on days, winter school holidays. Uh, lunch is provided to all of the students and incentives are offered to attend all of the programs, so the whole series. Uh, our first one starts January third, which is only a couple months away, so we're excited to get the program kicked off. Uh, our first partner is National Bank and Trust, where they will be exposing the banking industry to teens. They will have a variety of career exploration stations. This varies from loans, valuables, teller line, and the role of the board of directors. They also have financial literacy exercises that they will be doing with the students. Uh, and one of those also includes finding appropriate interview attire, which will be an activity where they go, the students will go on the square to different shops to find different attire and take pictures of it and bring it all back, uh, to discuss with the group. And then they'll also be going on, um, how to fill out a job application. The one during spring break will be how you stay connected. That's with our partner Colorado, Colorado Valley Communications. Uh, their career stations will be fiber splicing, marketing software demo, fixed wireless design tool demo, network operations center overview. Uh, they, one of the activities will be identifying personal strengths. Uh, they already have a group of staff who will do mock job interviews with the students. And they have a scholarship that they work with students who are graduating to come back and work at Colorado Valley, so they're gonna be talking about scholarship opportunities they have. They also have some part-time jobs that are open to high school students, so they're gonna be exposing the students to those opportunities as well.
Uh, we'll be doing two workshops, uh, that first week of June when, uh, the students are out of school. And the first one will be June fourth, and that is in partnership with the Fayette County Community Theater. And they will be doing interactive workshops, exploring lighting, uh, sound, makeup, costuming, and much more. And they'll be working with K-TIME as well. Um, the activities they're going to do will build self-confidence, confidence, um, help with communication and teamwork. And then the last, uh, workshop we will have will be doctors, nurses, veterinarians, and morticians too, and we will be highlighting, um, careers in the medical field. So, uh, that'll be on June sixth. Uh, we are currently partnering with Tejas Fayette County Veterinary Clinic, and they came about to build funeral, funeral home. And the teens will get to, uh, do some interactive activities where they give some animals sutures and learn how to give sutures, as well as an X-ray demo, kind of looking at some different types of injuries to animals and X-rays and how they're taken, uh, learn to take blood pressure. And then we'll also have a medical professional panel. And so we'll have about five medical professionals in the community and we'll allow the teens to write down a question on a piece of paper and kind of put it in a fishbowl and then have an interact, interactive question and answer.
Batteries. Batteries.
What?
Batteries.
Yeah, I guess.
No, it's me if I get close. Oh, okay.
Nah, you don't have that much static.
Wish I better then, I might.
Anyway. I know, I know. So based on the, based on the success of the program, uh, we're really hoping that 2020 will have the opportunity to expand it with more workshops. Um, but ultimately, how we're gonna gauge whether it's successful or not is, uh, whether teens have a better understanding of the type of careers that exist locally in the community and also that they have a realistic understanding of what those careers require, not only academically, but also socially. Uh, so that, uh, is coming in 2019 and we're, we've been working very hard and we're looking forward to a successful 2019. So thank you for your time.
Thank you for your time. That was wonderful and very encouraging, starting, it's all, starting early and educating in any problem is really important. Did any of the council have any questions?
What in the ages, we're talking to ages, is it junior high or, or like?
Both. Both. So we're doing six through twelve. So middle and high.
Okay.
I should say, they really have committed this and I, and I'll give them credit, Marsha Powell and Rotary Club. I had to, I'm a line, I'm a line. But they've worked real hard at kind of recognizing that and starting the interact program, uh, and those kind of programs. We've also started a Leo Club. So I think there's a lot of positive energy in the community, recognizing, uh, working with youth and focusing on service, but also the job issues. Uh, workforce creation has always been a big issue. Uh, we've done police parks, but I mean, if you grow your own, this is kind of growing your community on. Uh, and I think they've had some great partners and I really do appreciate. A lot of times what you see now, you may not see the, the fruits of this labor for a number of years, but I do really appreciate the work they've done and the communities, uh, working together to bring all this together. They really have worked hard, so thank you.
We appreciate it. The presentation was wonderful.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. Do you want events? Oh, okay.
Yeah, you want a real quick event, uh, just real quick, if you want to.
Sure. So Sunday, we have a customer service, um, and, uh, workshop. So that's from one to four. We're still taking registrations, uh, really geared toward those working in retail, um, for the holiday season. So we'll be doing that at the casino hall. Trick or treat, uh, Wednesday, October thirty-first, from four to six on the square. Then we also have Shop Small, which is the Saturday after Thanksgiving, November twenty-four. We'll do our breakfast at Pioneer Bank and then any receipts from that day of shopping, bring them to the casino hall and you get a goodie bag and enter to win a prize drawing. And then of course, we end the year with Schmecken Fest, December sixth. Uh, parade will start at five thirty this year.
I'm coming back.
Stacy, can you? I couldn't get it all done.
We'll get you.
There were too many. So I can put it on the radio?
Yes.
If you'll give me a list and.
I will. Yes, I can do. Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.
And you're welcome, Stacy, for the remainder. Item number two is to consider a resolution of that meeting of municipal court.
So.
Go ahead. To Stacy. On the page.
Nine. Yeah, I just want to, if we do this, it's kind of really recognizing the work done both down there and also create, uh, started to leave jumping with the organization for four years. And so, uh, there's a lot of knowledge there and, and so that's why I'd like to recognize them and it's something that the municipal court association puts out every year, so thank you.
Okay, and item number three, because, uh, Sean's gonna give us a status report.
It'll be real quickly, uh, this is primarily focused on how sets are contracting. Uh, they're the ones right now that were a huge on water ramp project on the north side of town, specifically down Camp Street, uh, Madison and Monroe, all the way down to Pearl. They're, we're upgrading those water lines at that location. All of the main lines have been installed now, uh, so that work has been done. They're in the process now of coming back and doing the tie-ins, uh, the service connections. I still think we've probably got another, at least another month of work, uh, hopefully less than that. Uh, we'll have to pressurize the line, uh, do a back T sample and then become, uh, twelve times, there's always time. Uh, we already, Bo is already working with agency construction, because that's gonna be the big issue now is doing the road repair. Agency will come back in, we'll redo a curve to curve, uh, milling of the street, uh, replating of the entire street. Uh, we're also working with a local contractor right now, once this work is done on the tie-ins, uh, the service lines, they'll put in, we'll do some lay down curve, uh, in locations where we have drainage issues. Uh, we've done that now, anytime we do a street, it's a long, the long-term improvement of the, uh, the street itself and the streets we were not tearing off the street and the drains, especially down on Madison, we had some issues right there if we locate it, really has a title road, we'll get that work done. Uh, I don't anticipate everything will be done probably until February, February, February. Weather's gonna be tough, but we'll be, uh, very, very much weather dependent. Uh, we just ask that we please bear with us. We will make sure as much as possible of the main lanes, especially on Pearl, uh, is, we have some bad intersections right now, we do those repairs. We're gonna go through that process. Uh, also, uh, work continues, uh, on the Ford Street project booster station. This is on the installation of aeration for the tri-hell and things. Uh, we're in the process of taking some work out of existing contract on the electrical work and then doing a subbing, a different sub in the back. So that project is moving forward. Think will be done hopefully by, by Christmas. That project will be done by Christmas.
When did you say it'd be done?
Hopefully by Christmas. Uh, it's really dependent upon the contractor getting in. Uh, Dora, who is the primary who will install the equipment, uh, on the aeration side, uh, I don't know what their schedule is. The contractor is working directly with them as part of that contract. That probably is the timing factor, uh, as I get a better day all over again.
Nobody's done anything on it.
The equipment is, is, the equipment is on site.
It's been here a long time.
And that's all I have left. And on, and if I can, there, I have just an access project. I really don't have anything. Uh, I was out on vacation last week, had, had time to go check everything today, I'll bring that back if I need to.
Okay.
But I'll do my update after.
All right. And then, um, item number four is consider setting the two thousand nineteen to twenty right policy. All of the papers, aye?
Aye.
Question period is asked. Chief?
Yes. Yes, ma'am.
Well, Fred Bay, October thirteenth, uh, we had three thousand seven hundred and fifty pounds of paper brought to us that wanted to be shredded. So I think it turned out pretty good. Uh, last week I attended Texas Commission on Law Enforcement Conference in Corpus Christi. It's mandated conference, uh, went over all the new laws imposed on Texas police officers that we have to get done within twenty twenty. It's a lot, it's a citizen interacting training that we have to do and, uh, and the high schools then, they got to start training the high school children. Student interactions with police officers also, so it's a two-way street on that one. We're gonna do something, they're gonna do something. Uh, I'll have to try to hold as many of these mandated courses in LaGrange as we can since we are a training facility. And. It's about it. You quick? Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
You bet. The last thing that I had, this one was like, uh, broccoli nut, but last week, it was a little small as usual. We went through one and a half dumpsters and I think that probably was related, I understand. Uh, we also did about two hundred and fifty loads of brush, so Mike and his crew continue to do a good job there and they do a good job keeping the community clean. And as I indicated, that under politicians, we have received a preliminary slap in the hotel, uh, last Wednesday, the staff is in the process of reviewing that. Uh, sales tax report is in your package information and, uh, the first October is up right at nineteen percent this July. By the look, it doesn't look like they're what they prior to, so. Sales performance. And that's all I have left.
Okay.
Second.
Any discussion about that much? All of them.
Aye.